Hello, hello.
Carrie, can you hear us?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll grab the agenda.
We are helpless with that our agendas.
Yeah. It's always by the time I get down to shoreline, it's too late to go back and I guess. All right, well, since everybody appears to be here, we do have a forum. There any call for other business items in the meeting today? None noted. So why don't we jump right into it? We have a presentation of the comprehensive plan review by the city park board. Did you want to go ahead and make a?
It's not a presentation, we're hoping that you guys read it. Questions for Mary. But I'll be happy to talk to you and we'll talk about it.
There you go. There you go.
So I'm Mary Carol, for those of you that I haven't met, and those of you that I have, it's nice to see you all. So I'm the chairperson of the parks board for the city of Toledo. So in 2023, at the end of 2023, it came to our attention that the parks comprehensive plan, parks and recreation plan, needed to be updated and last been done in 2016. So as part of that and to figure out, some of us that are on the parks board are fairly new. You don't have a lot of history here, so we don't have a lot of background. So we felt it was really important to reach out to the city, which we did. We did, we did a survey that we had in person at the all community meeting with the city of Toledo. We also had a survey online. Took all that data, we compiled it, sorted it and parsed it out. And we came up with what we believe is a really good sampling and a really good feel for what the citizens of the city of Toledo want from parks and recreation. Along the way, if you, hopefully you guys did read it. But along with, with what the city wants as far as recreation, we also included in there, as you know, we have what some of the funding opportunities are and some of the impacts that would make some of these things, projects would have to the city as far as funding and cost and stuff. So you know, we did put in their information about impact fees, getting impact fees to help support some of the parks. So I won't go into any more detail than that on it, although we are done with it. We have worked hard diligently on it. And we would like, we understand that it can, that the parks comp plan could be part of the, the city growth management plan. But I also, I believe it can stand on its, on its own. So we would like your approval on it, the parks board, and then we are going to take it to the city council and to get it approved by the city council and then it will be part of the plan for the city of Toledo.
Paul doesn't correct it, probably that comprehensive plan would go before the council is part of the entire package.
So if, as Mary stated, it can go either way. I mean, we can adopt it, if council adopts it separately, we can reference it to the comp plan and say per the adopted parks plan by the, or it can go. You know, we'll do CIPA and the Department of Commerce sixty day notice and all of those things on the, on the entire package. So if it's included in that, it will go through that process together with it and then it'll all go to council together. If it's, if it goes separately, then that'll have to also happen separately, so.
Okay, I think we would rather it go be all one thing.
All one thing, yeah, so I think this would be.
At least interject that if there is a grant opportunity before the comprehensive plan is done, that impacts, that may leave the parks comprehensive plan as part of that application process, it should be ratified by council.
The, the existing one should still be valid.
It's out of date.
Yeah.
Oh, it's out of date, so you're not eligible for grant money. So that may be the, that may be the reasoning to put you forward as a separate element.
It can still wrap it into the comprehensive plan, but if it could be ratified by council to stand on its own, need it.
It's just, it just adds more process, but it, that, that there's no reason it couldn't happen that way. You can, you can always adopt complan elements separately. I mean, usually we do them all together, but but this is, it, it's very well written, it's, it stands by itself without the comp plan, so you could certainly get through it separately.
And are we saying that if it's ratified by council, it can be used for grant applications? But to go through those approvals that Todd was talking about, we can wait till the whole plan gets together as one instead of the APs or?
We're not going to be too much farther behind, because we, we've got a couple more elements of the comp plan. Then we'll bring back the comp plan as a whole for the hearing at the planning commission level. And then after that, then we'll forward it off for the sixty day review, so we'll pause for a couple of months while we're waiting for the.
Yeah, the only thing that concerns me, Todd, is that.
That there's anything necessarily except for maybe down at the park.
Should we confirm with Joe and make sure he thought we're?
The problem is that things pop up and it's like we have to submit next week for grants. And again, if there are any changes to be made, if it's wrapped into this comp plan, we can't make those changes without changing the entire comp plan, right? But so if it stands alone, we can make.
You can amend elements of your comp plan. You don't have to amend the whole thing in order to amend the elements.
My suggestion would be to get down to council. And if it sits on a shelf, it sits on a shelf, it needs to be used, then we don't have to rush, right, back to council, right, and get it approved.
I agree.
So I guess if, if this is the planning commission acceptance of that, we could send it out now for the commerce sixty day review. And then we could publish CIPA. Yeah, because that has to happen before council takes action on it. And during that sixty days, we, we will. During that sixty days, we'll likely finish up this one. So we'll be somewhere, you know, we'll, we'll be about thirty to sixty days behind.
I think that was the part we were missing.
We're talking about posifying more than once.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed that part. I missed that part, so if a grant comes up, then we might be S O L.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Well, but I, I mean, if
you want to say something?
It's, it can be done, that should be, so there's.
What does that mean?
Why a parks board comp plan has to go through commerce?
Because it's an element of your comprehensive plan. So it has to be an element of your comprehensive plans, you collect impact fees. Because you're authorized through the state authority for GMA planning cities to collect impact fees.
But okay, so let's, so can I play out a scenario? If it's passed by council next month, for example, and a grant comes up and we use it for that grant process.
Well, I don't know if it's usable until it's been through proper reviews with the state agencies. I can ask, I can reach out for, I mean, either I or Rachel can reach out to our commerce connection and say, hey, we've got this element, we'd like to adopt it outside of the other elements. Is it subject to that? I mean, a parks plan by itself may have environmental impacts, but so, you know, so it's got to go through CPO, that's, that's a twenty, twenty day process with the publication in the newspaper and all that stuff. So it's about two week comment period. It's got the sixty day commerce and agency, so commerce takes it and they route it for agency review for sixty days. But I don't know, I mean, what happens if you adopt it without that? Then you may apply for a grant, they may say your, your parts plan is not eligible. But they may not.
Also, it may not be a requirement of that particular grant, right?
It may not be a requirement of the grant, well, if it's not a requirement of the grant, then you're existing one. So if it is a requirement for the grant, but I think maybe the safest bet here would be to reach out to commerce and just ask them, hey, if we wanted to adopt this one right now, can we adopt it so that way we're eligible to apply for our experience? And that, I can pose that question pretty easily.
I have some other questions. Number one. Is there a capitalization plan whatsoever in your report with regards to the collection of impact fees?
There is, there is language in there, yes.
Well, the.
We have an amount.
But not an actual amount.
Yeah, no.
Don't we need an amount, Todd, or how does that work?
Yeah, in order to collect impact fees, you're going to have to establish the nexus between development and the impact. So you know what, and we had talked a little bit about that when we were reviewing it. So if you've got costs in there and costs have to include only, the cost of impact fees can only include development of new facilities, not maintenance of existing ones or adding new elements to existing parks. So you can't use it to maintain or operate parks, but you can use impact fees to, to build new ones and to improve amenities of existing parks too. So, so with that, we would have to come up with a separate table and maybe that's done in the comp plan. If you've got the framework for it, parks impacts are usually attributable to residential development only. Although in some communities, they say, well, office users and employees who are here may use parks for lunch breaks and other things, so they're.
Well, especially where, where those residents are located, they're going to be down the street from what is proposed as Toledo telephones, but small business park. And, and part of the, some of the questions that I've been asking for quite some time is when the parks department or the parks review board starts discussing this. Is there going to be any discussion with regards to our intention? Because we are going to be deeded to quite considerable large pieces of land from each one of those subdivisions. The discussion of a nature preserve, walkway, benches, things like that, which would definitely be attributable to new growth and would require that kind of a capitalization report. And, and when I'm looking through this, I'm looking at mainly what we have existing and possibilities from existing land that we own. But I, I don't see anything here that forged forward with what council, at least certain members of council and myself have discussed with regards to that nature preserve and that, or the river walkway that is part of our new zoning along First Street. So I I, I appreciate the report and the report seems well, well stated. But I, I'm missing some components I thought we were going to end up getting from that as part of our total package, because that would certainly infer impact fees if those items were part of the allocation for the reports. And, and I do want to see that happen because we've got somewhere three hundred and fifty homes that, that, you know, extend that out at a thousand dollars a home or something like that, and it's a considerable amount of money that could be used towards making a feature that not only the future residents there, but the current residents would enjoy going to.
Can those two pieces of land you're talking about, Steve, can those be included? Since, since the city doesn't actually have them now, can they be included in the parks comprehensive plan?
Well, and the one we've already been told we're being deeded, the land that's part of their, is part of their approval process.
We don't have it yet, right?
Yeah. We did consider the new developments in our discussions. But because we didn't know, we didn't have anything definite and we hadn't had any discussion with you guys basically either too. But because it was such an unknown, we did intentionally leave some of that out. We didn't, we didn't enter into the specifics, we did not.
That's totally understandable too, because I'm not sure you have anybody on the board that's actually capable of doing the budgeting necessary to get that thing on there, so.
So that said, since we don't have that information and we know that we can we can't update it as we need, when we get more specifics and it is more, would it, would it be okay if we went ahead and ratified as is now and as we have more specifics about the developments and we know for sure, then can we make a ratification to it?
How does that affect your impact?
Well, so you.
Already decided not to ratify it independently, so we do, we're now back.
We're back into it all the way to the time. Okay.
So we have cost estimates in here for items, but we don't have the number of items.
Specifically, and especially those things, those items.
So, so what, what we need to do is take, take this and say, well, we need twenty seven ADA restrooms, we need a hundred grills, we need however many weather resistant picnic tables and here's, here's where they're going to be. And those are necessary to serve the population growth that's identified in the growth management plan. And then because of that, you know, there's two point three seven residents per household. So you take that and so for every new single family residence, then that's what gets you to your impact fee. So an impact fees can't be a hundred percent. You have to identify other funding sources, so maybe you identify that it's seventy five percent of the cost of the new facilities and then you can collect those. And the good thing about Callet's Meadows is you never best ahead of impact fees or impact fee changes. So Callet's Meadows hasn't built one single house yet. If we can get this adopted prior to them doing that and implement impact fees, then you can collect an impact fee for every single one of those building permits that you.
Right, so before we finalize the park comp plan, we're going to want to get a section in there on an actual amount for impact fees, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you.
Sorry, go ahead.
How do we get that?
Yeah.
Well, you've got the basics of it here, so you could look at the parks that you have and say, well, this park needs restrooms and in order to serve the population that's going to be using the park, it needs fourteen restrooms or seven or five or.
Those are the easy tasks, I'm thinking of the nature.
Yes.
The nature walk.
So there's documents here on that, they've got some like plan put together for that kind of stuff, I don't know.
Here for Callet's Meadows for a nature, nature preserve, but if there is a river walk.
There is. Yeah.
So I, I may be a little bit behind the ball on this one, but my, I thought that, are we talking about the same thing when we say that, that we were thinking about nature trails that would connect the natural areas here or the park areas here in, in Toledo? Is that part of what we're talking about or is this a completely separate situation that just includes a river walk? And we talked about.
And then in addition, there is a big drop off in Callet's Meadows that we want to comply somehow.
Okay.
From a nature standpoint. And then we have the riverfront all the way down first and around, around the bend to the water treatment facility.
Right.
And that has been discussed.
I'm doing a trail, a riverwalk trail, connecting the park down to down here.
And you did have some elements over there for the city owned parcels in that riverwalk trail. So all it would take would be to extend that concept up and identify a cost of that. And I mean, right now, we've assumed that as those pieces develop, you just require the developer who is redeveloping those parcels to build their section of the riverwalk.
Right, okay.
But a little bit, you know, but if you're going to have an impact fee, you could put a fifty percent of that in there, so that way it's not fully the burden of the property owner who's redeveloping the property. You could use your city impact fee money to help to offset that cost because it does provide a broader public benefit for the new residents that are moving in.
Can I, can I play devil's advocate for a second?
No.
I'll turn his mic off.
Stepped into the position that the school, school district was in that whatever impact fee we come up with is going to be a drop in the bucket for what those two in particular costs.
Yeah.
So.
It's, it's a drop in the bucket, but it's something in the bucket rather than nothing in the bucket.
Well, but you have to use them within a certain timeframe and there's no, if, if it's only going to do a hundred feet of a riverwalk.
You can't use it for a hundred percent anyways, even if we got like ten million dollars and the project was ten million dollars, we couldn't use, yeah, so.
Yeah, okay, understood, but let's, let's, let's get down to the real, realistic aspect of this is that asphalt is expensive, concrete is expensive.
Prevailing wage is expensive.
Prevailing wage is expensive, so let me come back to my question. If, let's assume all of the impact fees come in and we only have enough money, whatever percentage that is, to build three hundred feet of boardwalk.
Yeah, so what's the incremental path to?
You find a grant to build another three hundred feet and then you expect private development to pay for another three hundred feet. So now you have your first nine hundred feet of, of riverwalk and it's paid for incrementally in thirds. You don't put the full burden on the developer, you don't put the full burden on the, on the grant.
Because I'm just thinking that.
You use, you can use these as matching funds toward grants.
You're thinking of a complete road in just a little tiny section.
Yeah.
I guess, I understand, but I guess why I said the school district is being where I'm seated is is this worth it, is impact fees for parks worth it?
Well, when the, when they get, I mean, their ways to build schools are usually through levies.
Right.
Right, and taxpayer funded levies are hard to pass. It's easier to pass if you can point to that and say, look, we're taxing new development as they come in to pay their fair share. So we're really only burdening you with your percentage of the new building we need for, for these students.
And there's a lot of, sorry, Todd, there's a lot of money for grants out there and I think we're not getting them because we're trying to take so much money and put it into Kemp Olson. And I know when we were dealing with the department, was it the department of commerce? No, um, the one that we just, I just did with Joe, I forget, it's not the department of commerce, something else, but um, no, 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 it was the one for the park anyways. Um, their response was, you guys have all this, all these houses going in, don't you have some kind of park plan there? And I wasn't prepared for those questions and they said you guys should be able to use your REIT money, which we know is not that much. Um, but they said, once you it's like, we're going to spend, I think Joe was asking for like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They'd be willing to give it on top of, if they're, they're looking for responses like, yeah, we're going to use our REIT, we've got impact fees, we've got all these things and that's when they're willing to give the grant money. But what they're, they're not looking to take three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and redo a kitchen at Kemp Olson. So I think if we've, we've got to be able to have other.
Other funding sources.
But I'm with you Cindy too, it's like, it's, it's going to be like where.
The amounts that are in there is me, you made some pretty in-depth conversations with AI to come up with some general costs, it doesn't include labor, there's just no way I could have touched that.
Well, and it, but it all goes into a pot, right? So all those costs then, I mean, all we need to do now is figure out the numbers and then we can put a simple spreadsheet together and say, okay, item A, we got ten of those and they cost a hundred bucks, so this, this number. So then, so then where you have the ranges identified, you pick a number in the middle and you say, this is what they cost and this is the number that we used and this is how we do it, this is our methodology. So then all of a sudden, you have, you have a bucket of money that you need now. And then all you do is you then associate that with the number of residents you have projected to grow by. And then take that, residents per household, now you have an amount per household.
And we have, right, we have those, we have those projections.
Well, I, I think a perfect example of that, and it's something that we had touched on a long time ago. When we first started talking about impact fees, was not necessarily, not necessarily the fact that they were going to be the end all to our financial problems. But in the case of Windlock, for say, they have a budgeted roundabout at the, I believe at the dentist's office, why there? And it's a million dollar roundabout and they were able to do that because they had to be able to contribute fifty thousand dollars to it. Where's that fifty thousand come from? That comes from a slush fund that you start building with your impact fee so that you have those contributions to make towards a bigger piece of the pie that you can get.
So, so if you have a, if you have collected ten thousand dollars of impact fees, because you've said this is how much per new household and you get that many new households and you've collected ten thousand bucks, it doesn't mean with that, that you have to buy seventeen ADA restrooms. You can use that money toward any of the projects that you've identified in your parks plan, yet to the budgeted amount that you have.
So you can have an incremental build of this plan wherever it's needed, so if you says the city see fit.
You could take that ten thousand dollars as a whole and plug it into the Kemp Olson three hundred and fifty thousand dollar project and you could say, look, we're putting in, we're putting in our, our park impact fee money.
So since this exercise most likely will fall to me, um, my biggest question mark is Callet's Meadows and that drop off. How do you estimate?
I would not do anything with that now because the city doesn't control or own that property until they record the plat. And although it's highly likely that they're going to do that, given the amount of effort and time they put into it, there's no guarantee that that's going to happen. So until that becomes city property to start to plan for it is, is kind of brain damage. You, you can update your comp plan once a year, so.
But how much does that cost to run it fully through CIPA and, and update it?
Well, and so it, I think that's something that you all can do on your own, once the comp plan is established.
And do we have to run our full comp plan through CIPA or just the amended part?
Just the amended elements. So you could say, we're changing these elements, here's the old, here's the new, here's the comparison, here's the why. So you come up with a staff report, just like you would for council, an agenda report or a staff report.
And.
And then you fill out a CIPA checklist and a lot of people that are not land use professionals fill out CIPA checklists. The benefit of having somebody that knows what they're doing, fill it out as you're less likely to raise somebody's radar because you kind of know what's going to get somebody excited in a CIPA checklist, but you know, you can fill that checklist. It's a twenty one page checklist, you could, and, and yet for these, it's a non-project action. So most of the answers to the twenty one pages or does not apply or this is a non-project action and we're not doing that. And then you have two pages with seven questions at the end that you provide more detailed responses to. And if the agencies don't like them, then you work through it and it costs just half time. You know, if you want to, if, it, it takes me about, probably about two days to research and complete a CIPA checklist on a project for non-project actions, maybe less. So sixteen hours, so, so that's, what about three grams? So that's, that's what it'll cost you to have me do it, plus the time it takes to generate the publications and all that stuff, so you know. That's a budget range for what it costs to have a CIPA done.
Yeah, that's not.
Something Reed could take care of?
Yes. No.
No.
No, not with Reed, no. Reed is infrastructure only.
Yeah, and. And you can't use parks impact fees to pay for the soft costs like that. Or maybe, I guess, if you, because you can't pay for permitting with, with that, like permitting for the development of new, new things. So if you somehow tied it to that, then you could, but you can't use parks impact fees to update your comp plan.
Does our, does our zoning plan call for, if you have a certain amount of density in residences, that you have to put a public space of some sort? Do we talk about those things?
That, that was in some of the research that I read in the parks plan that said that we have to have this many parks per resident.
Yes.
And that came out of some national.
Yeah.
You all found that some place.
Yes, okay, and so those are the other things we'd want to connect altogether, so people could go through and when it's feasible, that sort of thing.
Yeah, that's the missing link, I think, that's the last piece that needs to be done. We need that big lump sum number and then we need to allocate that back to a number of residents in our growth plan and then number of households.
So the part that comes up in my head when I think about this is when, when people are building, to be aware that, that, that we need to somehow be able to say, there is public spaces here and here and here. So you're going to have to allow for a right of way of some sort if you put wherever you put this, so I don't know how deep into it we went, but that's the kind of thing that comes up in my head, if we're planning to connect these later, we should probably provide some guidance early on as they're building so that we don't run into any issues.
And that's the other thing that you would do for the citywide trail is you'd take a, take a thick marker and draw a line around and say, this is about where we like the trail. So that way you know, as one of those parcels develops, then you can say, hey, that big line goes through your lot, we need you to address that somehow. And if nobody on either side is interested, then, then how they address it is flexible, right? They can choose where that line goes exactly, as long as it serves the function of connecting. Their makers have already developed, then it's pretty clear where their line's going to go.
So do we have that marker yet or is that?
Not for that, not for that element. That's a conceptual, that, that whole downtown walkway connectivity thing is a conceptual thing that's not in the.
And you have to do it like this.
I don't know, this is.
All right, well, I, I don't, that may be something I guess we can bring up at a later date, but that's something we should.
This is great, Mary, thank you, I know you guys put a lot of work in.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's really good.
Yeah.
It's right here. So if you want to look this over and I can make you a copy, if you think, I I've never looked in it, honestly.
That'd be awesome.
Um. Yeah, I'm not sure if that even applies, but.
Yeah.
It says, two, I mean, it's old, it's twenty years old, but.
Is there a line on the plan that shows where the crowd goes? It is, look at that.
So Mary, maybe you can take that.
Oh, my God, that's so beautiful. That's twenty years old.
It's a trail system.
Okay, I love it. See, I love that. That's great.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the length of that trail is also applicable to a lot of the grants.
Yeah.
Especially like the get outside grants and the.
And the sad loop around.
I honestly have, this is the first one I've opened it. There is a stack of stuff in there that I'm like, oh. That's gonna come useful and I mentally know where it's at, like the old shoreline stuff that I couldn't find.
Okay.
We'll have a copy free tomorrow if you want to swing by and pick it up.
So we come to do a decision on whether we're going to put this in front of council as approved.
I think with the 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 thought process so far was that i- if it needed to go through, that Todd was gonna figure out uh from the commerce folks, if it needed to go through all the permitting process before they ratified it. And if that's the case, then we'll just do it together. If not, then they'll ratify and be able to use it for grants if possible, and then we'll include it, eat out of it.
Just do it all together.
Rachel's gonna do that research.
Yeah, we can just do it. I think Todd said it's easier to do it all together, right?
It's easier to do it all together.
Just do it all together. If we can amend it later.
But but if you want to get it done sooner and either you or I could just ask commerce, what does that look like if we want to adopt this now? I mean, you you got.
If it's only thirty days behind.
What's that catch? Well, it just has to be done by the end of the year.
Right, but you're saying if we were to put in, if we were to put in the parks plan now, and then you said it's we're only gonna be like thirty days behind on the rest of it?
Thirty to sixty, yeah.
I guess big fear that Joe's gonna walk in with a half a million dollar grant or something.
It can fill me another blank.
Three weeks.
Fill me another one.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the thing that council could do is just ratify your existing parks plan.
Right.
Just say. This is good enough for now, so we're renewing it until we get our new comp plan adopted. I don't know if you need to do all that for an existing.
Our old comp plan though, if I, from the conversations I've had with Joe though. Our old comp plan didn't meet some of the requirements for a lot of the a lot of grants. So that was kind of one of our problems.
This this would be the first uh finalized park plan that Toledo's ever had, I believe.
No.
No?
No, we had one twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen.
Really? Okay.
So Mary, part of working with Joe was to, I guess, put things in the plan that would also make us more, we qualify for.
Absolutely, absolutely. There was, there was a lot of consideration about, you know, what what elements had to be in. In order to to get funding and from, and if there is a whole section in there of of different funding opportunities. Not all of them will we will be pursued, but there's a lot of them available and we just, we were very cognizant that we met as many requirements as possible.
That's awesome.
It does check a lot of boxes. Well written, boy.
Yeah, I like it a lot.
I was impressed.
So so Jared, do you wanna? Do you want to table that for further action or?
I think that's probably the appropriate thing to do. Do I need a motion on it?
A second motion. All right, make a motion that we that we table the plan.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Very good. So you can find out.
All of theirs.
You and I are gonna get together for a comment one second.
Brian.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi. Well, I seconded it.
Stay with it just a little longer.
I'm looking for the old, I'm looking for the reason why I thought we didn't have a park plan.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Okay, unfinished business, revised floodplain regulations.
Oh, yes.
So this one should go quick.
Yeah.
Um, you have all given me input and I have, I have based on that input, I've made edits to the floodplain regulations.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you all.
Um. So I believe the document that I presented with. You now um reflects the edits that you directed in your last planning commission meeting. In the interest of time, I can just ask you if you have any questions, or if you'd like, I can go through some of these in some detail. They are all shown in track changes and I did email work versions out. Or actually, I didn't, but I believe Cindy emailed the work versions out so you could actually see those and review those.
And and Todd, we had a conversation after the meeting ended, uh, the about maybe mentioning the definitely prohibited classes of substances that we uh being buried, that did you. I know I wanted to make sure that the board uh saw that, cause that's something we, I just. After we had that conversation, it came up, so I don't know that they're aware that that was gonna change or.
I I didn't see those. I didn't see those things, the lab fill and the.
There was one about being able to store in aquifer recharge areas, underwater tanks, or I mean, underground tanks and things like that, chemicals that are protected, regulated chemicals as the word. And so as Chair Steve brought up, a really good point about, uh, there are just simple things like liquid water that you may want to store or just. Just the normal course of of running a piece of land. And uh, so with that, what came up afterwards was that we have language in uh that defines defined by the state as. Really hazardous chemicals and things that are just outright that we can just say, we don't want that class of chemical. And so I was thinking that may be the answer we were looking for, so I suggested that to Todd.
So that would be in the critical aqua recharge areas. This is the final of the floodplain areas.
Oh, I got you. Okay.
So. So there there are different different sections. The floodplain areas. Talks about floodproofing and all of those things, so.
And does this, is this one really not part of it?
No, I did not bring that one back at this meeting because I wanted time for. ELS to begin to talk to you all about wetlands and buffers and habitat. So they're they're here and they're waiting for.
I've been sitting patiently, so can we put them on board?
Well, we can, as long as, so we. Are there any comments on the final changes that I've made to the floodplain? And when I say final changes, you all will see all of this one more time as a package when it goes to public hearing, so you'll still have time. To make changes or ask other questions, but I just want to make sure I have it ninety-nine percent close before we get into public hearing with it. And it, because we'll be going through the whole code in one hearing, so I don't wanna. I don't want to be too far off base when I get into that here.
Well, if I said there was anything wrong with it, I wouldn't be able to tell you what it was. It's very technical.
Very good.
It's very technical.
So well, so the changes that we made, the changes that you made were all the ones that are marked in the comments?
Um, there are, so I think that deletions are marked in the columns and additions are marked in blue text. Got it. If you are looking at the Word document. I still have some highlights in there, but that's because. This is only one element of the code that references other sections of the code, so I can't update. Those references until I get everything all put together in some numerical fashion. So. Okay, well, I guess.
Yeah.
And 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 moving on doesn't mean forever. I mean, like I said, if you see something that jumps out at you, we can still fix it. So next up on the agenda, we had um the wetlands. Critical areas discussion, and I believe Carrie's gonna lead our discussion on that tonight. Is that is that right, Carrie? Looks, it sounds like you're muted, maybe?
No, not anymore.
There you are. Um, and and I believe that you all met Carrie and Francis. At the last meeting when they introduced themselves and gave an introduction to some of the critical areas components. Is that, yeah, that accurate?
Francis taught us about the oak tree.
Yeah. No, not me.
No, no.
I was a silent partner on that.
Well, tonight you get. So I I don't know if there's anything you needed from me, Carrie. Uh, if there is, let me know, otherwise feel free and. Take the mic.
Sure. Um, so do we want to start with the the comparison of the buffers? Is that where we want to start?
That seems like it. Because you need that information to develop the rest of that goes, that accurate?
Okay, yes. Did anybody have any questions before I get started? Right off the bat? No, okay. Um, so basically what I did is I prepared kind of a comparison of what you, the city has existing in their code. And what the buffer widths. Um. That could be proposed in our new ordinance. And these are basically based on um ecology's guidance that came out in twenty eighteen. And. Because we're using Lewis County's um C A O, they had adopted. These buffers um in their code because it was updated in twenty eighteen. Um. So there is, as you can see, there is a pretty significant difference. Um. In some of the categories between what you have currently. And what the ranges would be. Um, with the preferred option, which is option number one. Um. So. The the difference is too, though, with. The way the buffer widths are structured now, you do have some variability. So like if for if you look at category one, for example, which currently you have at two hundred feet. Um, with the new way of um stating the buffers. It uh one could range from fifty to three hundred. So you have more variability, same with um category two. Um. In category three. You're probably going to see the most increase because. Fifty is pretty close to forty and then you go up to one fifty. So um, that's a pretty big jump, uh, not so much in the fours. But we figured you might have a little shock value when you saw those with the differences. Um. But there really isn't any wiggle room for jurisdictions anymore to propose anything different than this. What they can do is they have three options that you can pick from. Um, based on how you want to administer the ordinance. Um, we have a recommendation of which one we think would be the best, uh, give you the most variability and the most flexibility. Um, to reduce your buffers. Um. But I'll go through all three just because. You know, that way you can ha- kind of have an idea of the difference between um, um, does anybody have any questions before I kind of go over the three options?
These are three options on how we would respond to the hundred and fifty foot buffer?
No, so the three options are basically um. What we get to choose from to actually put in your adopted ordinance.
Okay.
Um.
This is how buffers are. Are determined for projects. There's three different ways you can determine buffer.
Yeah, and the the ecology gives you three options and then the jurisdiction can pick from those three options. Which it which it will want to go with to adopt into their ordinance. Um. So. Option one um is just to be. Uh, transparent is our. Um, preferred option because we feel like it gives the most uh latitude in buffers. Um. The difference uh with option one is that it allows for buffer averaging. Um. And buffer reduction such as um it allows. If you had a high intensity land use. You could do certain um. Methods to reduce it down to moderate. Um, so there would be a reduction there. So like if you, let's say you had a high intensity use, um. The habitat score of eight to nine, you could reduce that three hundred to two twenty-five. And so basically what, so option one is really centered around the habitat scores. In um. For a wetland, which is, are you guys all familiar with the habitat scores?
No.
Okay. So when when you rate a wetland. Um, you have a rating system that you have to go through. In order to figure out what category the wetland is. Um, so this table is based on. You look at your form and you look at, okay, what's my habitat score? Okay, it's eight points. Okay, then I have to follow that top line for my buffers.
And are we talking essentially the points get higher as protected species are found? Maybe there's a lot of wildlife, fish running, fish barreling, that sort of stuff?
Um, it's based on, so it's based on three categories. It's uh. Based on um habitat, water quality, um, and. Water quantity. And so all those factors are rated. So there is a component that a habitat, like you were saying, that would be fall into the habitat section. But it's not all of it, but when they, when they look at the ha- they're just looking at that one habitat score, part of the rating to get these. Um. So the way it works is it goes by a point system. When you get to a wetland that has five points or less, it it defaults to the second table that's on the second page. Um. And then the buffers are listed there. So basically, if you have five or under. Really what they're thinking is all you're really providing by the wetland is water quality functions. Because five and lower is a pretty low um. Low quality wetland. Um. So that's the first option. Um, and like I was saying, the the pros of that is that it allows you to buffer average, so. Let's say um you, I'm gonna let Francis talk. You wanted to um talk about averaging. I'll give you something.
Okay. So uh ju- so just to follow up on Carrie's uh points of the well and rating. It's looking at those three functions. And the ability of that wetland to provide those three functions. So, you know. Typically a pasture wetland out in a field. Um, with ag all around it, doesn't have a lot of functions, so it scores scores low. Um, a wetland on a stream system with snags and logs and habitat for amphibians and um. And connections to other habitat like oak trees and things like that, then that gets a higher score. So that kind of helps. Do the scaling of the of of how the category. Is determined and then, of course, then the categories get lined up with the buffer widths. Um, but the averaging idea or the concept is that. You could build on one side of the wetland if it's a hundred foot buffle buffer, for example, but let's say you couldn't make. You couldn't keep the hundred foot buffer because of the house being. You know, you couldn't, you couldn't keep the hundred foot buffer, you had to go down to eighty foot buffer. Well, you could. If you own on the other side of the wetland, you could move that buff, that side of the wetland out, that side of the wetland buffer out larger to a hundred and twenty feet. So it's still an average of a hundred feet. So the averaging is basically taking apart, taking aside. One wetland, but one side of the wetland shrinking it down and increasing it elsewhere.
Yes, which is allowed with this first option. Um, it is not allowed with either of the other two. Um.
That's huge.
Yeah.
It's very huge.
And does the the points assigned, do they get less as, let's say, for example, there's very little wildlife? It's just a, the water quality is not good. Does that mean, is that an indication of the score would be going down essentially at that point? It's decided to protect uh wetlands that are very diverse and thriving, that sort of thing.
Yes. Mm-hmm, yep. Yeah, that's the higher buffers for the higher scores. Um. The cons are, um, it will require you to adopt a land use intensity table, which you currently don't have. Um, but that. We've ar- that was already in Lewis County's code, which is what we're using as a base for this. So that's not a big deal. Um, and Todd and I have been kind of looking at the one that um Lewis County. Has and trying to make it, you know, some of the things don't quite fit. What you're, what you guys have out there, but we'll talk about that a little later when we get to the. Actual revised ordinance. Um. So option two, um. It's it's simpler to use because you don't have to figure out habitat scores, you don't have to, you know, um. You don't have to look at a habitat score, then a land and use intensity and come up with it. Um, all it's based on is the category of the wetland. And the land use intensity. Um. And. So it is simpler to use. But it does not allow buffer averaging and it does. But it does not allow buffer averaging and it does not allow buffer reduction such like what I. Told you about before, like if you have a high intensity land use. And you um meet some of the conditions, you can move it down to a moderate, does not allow for that. Again, it requires the adoption of land use intensity tables because you'd need to what know what they were to figure out if you were low, moderate or high. But with us, there's more cons than there are pros. I mean, it is simpler and it it depends, you know, if you're, there are some jurisdictions that are like, we don't. We don't want to have to worry about that. We don't want to have to, you know, figure this out. So they just go ahead and adopt a simpler table. The last option is um. Basically, all it is is the category of the wetland and a buffer width and that's it. Um which is really simple to administer. However, it gives you no flexibility. Based on your habitat score. So basically, any category to wetland, even if it had a lower habitat score. Would have the same buffer, which. Would not for for most jurisdictions, I don't think that that's what you would want to do.
Let me ask you a question then. On your averaging that you're able to do on table one. How severe can the averaging be?
Um you can't, what is it, Francis? You can't go um. Below seventy-five percent.
Right, so you could you could average a hundred foot buffer down to seventy-five feet. Um but i- in the old days, which it's not anymore, we used to go down to fifty percent with averaging, but they've pushed back on that and they want. The buffers really to be retained in the seventy-five percent of the original measurement. So. The, which option again, Carrie, allows the reduction based upon modifying the land use or um doing the.
That's just option one's the only one that allows that.
Okay, so we we do that one a lot in a lot of our um projects in other jurisdictions because. Usually for subdivisions. Um the engineer can find a way or architect can find a way to. Direct the lights away from the wetland, put some fencing in, make sure stormwater is well treated before it gets into the wetland. So. There's like, I think there's a half a dozen different um or more. Uh best management practices that have to be done to achieve that reduction, but. That is one tool in the toolbox that we've always liked as um consultants. Who work with a lot of developers having to kind of deal with this stuff.
But aren't you achieving that in table two anyway? Because the buffers are quite a bit smaller.
In option two?
Yeah, in option two. I mean, it seems like on table one, option one, you're fighting to get down to what table two already gives you.
Oh, so table two is part of option one. So you get option one, table one and table two.
Is that right?
Paying the water quality of offers.
Got it, okay, I'm I I apologize.
So table. That's an important.
Is five points or less, so that's for a low quality wetland. So once you, you once you get out of table one, you now go to table two to assess what that five points or less buffer is gonna be. Right, so.
Got it.
Above five points, you get six or seven points and then eight or nine points. So you have that point system that's built into that. So you have two different tables. Below five, it all goes, it all gets dumped into that.
Probably misread that.
Yeah, so.
Well, to be fair, I put it on, I couldn't fit it on the same page. If would have been on the same page, it would have been easier for you.
Yeah, so option two is. Is a low, moderate and high intensity land use. So that one has the intensities, but it doesn't have the ability based on the point system.
Right, I I retract my statement.
I didn't realize at the end what it was exactly for. I- is there this, I this is, I guess, just a question on the idea that. It seems to incentivize um classifying, uh being able to rate the wetland at a lower score is beneficial to. Having flexibility. So I I just wonder, I guess um. How does that play out in the real world? Do you, is the, are the fights all about lowering that score in some way or?
Well, for, it depends on what agency is regulating. So, I mean, the thing is, I mean. As consultants, you know, we have to um keep the agencies happy and. We, you know, we don't want to um damage our reputation, so we're not going to rate a wetland lower. Typically than it is, I mean, but um. In uh impacts that are regulated by ecology in the core, they will look at your ratings with a fine tooth comb. And so, but you know, what if it's a local jurisdiction? A lot of times they don't have a staff member that knows enough to know, so they're kind of trusting. You um, uh that being said, you know, we. Because most of our clients are developers, you know, we are going to look, if if there's. A gray area between a point. We're probably gonna go to the lower section if it, you know, lower score. You know, if it, if it's like, it could be one or the other. I don't know, you know. But, yeah, I mean, it would be nice if we could do that.
Cause I it was just, I wa- wondered how it played out in the in the in in the actual, you know, business of of getting it done, so thank you.
I have a question. So for option two, it says simpler to use than option one as it doesn't require knowledge of the habitat score. Isn't that score just a number given in the wetland study itself? Or is that something that we'd have to figure out on our end?
Yeah, you would.
Well, the the consultant, the consultant is required to provide that.
Right, no, I think her question is for the administration of it. Yes, you would have to know. So you would have to look in the report, see what the habitat score was. Um so it would require whoever's administering your permits. To, in order to figure out if the buffers that were proposed by the consultant were correct. You would have to know where to go, you know, you'd have, but I mean, it's not that hard, I mean.
Yeah, that's because it's gonna be me. I administer the permits.
Oh, well, there you go.
So I'm just, and I've I've actually had a wetland study done on my property before, so I'm I'm sort of familiar with them. So, I mean, if it's. Is it some kind of like crazy math that we have to do on our end or is it just read?
It's already there.
Okay.
It's already there. If you look at the wet, front of the wetland rating form, it literally lists the these scores for each category. So all you'd have to do is. Look at it, see the number, you're getting it.
Okay.
So what I normally do is I don't do any of that when I'm reviewing these for jurisdictions. If it's done by somebody who is reputable. Then what I do is I just put it out because all the projects that have impacts to wetlands always go to SEPA. So they get reviewed by uh fishing wildlife, department of ecology, and they have. People who also know how to read those rating forms. So I I never do. I mean, I I I kind of look at it. I look at what they're doing. I look if it's looks feasible. And it's like, okay, it looks like it meets our code because they're not reducing buffers by more than this, but I never look at the category scores or any of that stuff when I review. Projects because it's subject to SEPA and I rely on the SEPA process to correct it. If a consultant comes in and it's pretty obvious that their work is. Is not right based on what I can either see in aerial photos or see on the ground. Um then at that point, I usually advise the jurisdiction to hire um a reviewing consultant to come in and double check their work before we send it out for SEPA. Because we as a jurisdiction don't want too many red marks on our SEPA, you know, sending, sending things that aren't. Accurate at all out for SEPA review doesn't reflect well on us either because it means that we don't.
Right, and in the office, we should at least know what we're looking at. So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like some, I had to do like there's so many this kinds of fish based off of. This kind of tree and this amount of water and I gotta like.
All of that is in there, but as long as the grand concept looks like it is feasible and if if they're calling it kind of what you would expect it to be. Then you send it out for SEPA and the state agencies take it apart.
Perfect.
Two very fine tooth combs, fish fishing wildlife and and department of ecology.
It's not as hard to administer as you think, even though it is more complicated for, uh you know, the the benefit for a landowner is that. If if you go with the simplest of these solutions. Then the category of the weapons usually rated in the W D F W, so they can just pull it off of there. They don't even need to hire a consultant. They get a three hundred foot buffer. But they don't need even need to hire a weapons consultant at that point. They just draw a three hundred foot buffer on it and what do you know, they've met your code by option three. They have no flexibility. So so what what E L S is recommending is what developers would prefer.
Prefer, yeah.
For them to deal with. Um but mom and pops wouldn't because they don't want to have to pay thousands of dollars to hire a weapons biologist to go out and analyze that stuff. So they they'd probably just rather back three hundred feet away from the creek and call it good. So that's.
Draconian, but less paperwork.
So that's, that's the dilemma in in Toledo, right? Uh you know, you've got a lot of area as we proceed out. Into the future city limits out that out toward I five and that junction. And this is really going to come into play out there because it's going to directly affect the usable property um all out through that quarter.
And I have to assume it's gonna be a large majority of builders and not individual.
And and here in town, uh you know, I think Carrie pulled up, pulled a map and I pulled some of the G I S maps. Here in town, you don't really have that many many weapons or streams or anything. Within your downtown core.
So it's not going to affect the smaller.
So mom and pops aren't going to be impacted by this code as the developers will be, but occasionally it will be. I mean, you do have that. That stream that runs through the edge of town. Over there by the ice cream joint, kind of that goes underneath the bridge down the bottom of Calhoun Meadows. Is that what that is? Yeah. You do have a, you have a really, they have good ice cream, good burgers.
Yes, they do, but it's yeah. Yeah, it's Bill Creek.
But you know, something else, nobody has three hundred feet to make a buffer.
Well, you you don't, you don't have available properties. But I like the idea that if somebody has, like, they have the ability to sort of shorten one side and then extend it on the other. I think that that is the the part that seems to to be very attractive if somebody's trying to. Still allow from the from the wetland, but then be able to do their project.
And these buffers are new to developers, these, so flexibility is gonna be good for them.
I think uh the more flexibility, the better.
Absolutely.
I I don't see any disadvantage to it.
Yeah, I definitely see option one as the way to go.
Same. So based on that, then E L S can then further develop the the codes and and bring that back. Did you need anything more on that discussion, Carrie, or is that it?
I don't think so. Um if anybody has any more questions.
That was very well explained, thank you.
Yeah, I know, I I have a question, but it doesn't directly relate to to this part. It was uh something that came up in the last conversation, which was. The way the buffers were affected by al- I guess altitude, i- if, for example, here by the Calhoun, we have like a hundred and seventy feet up and. Is the buffer still the same? Is it, how is that short? And I was curious if that has been finalized, that sort of language in the. In the code. So maybe that's a segue into their next part. Um and this is the article two weapons draft that you all have. And I'm not sure how much time you all have had to go through that, but. Carrie, did you have a way that you wanted to walk by and commission through that that draft of the code or?
I mean, there there are some main sections. I mean, a lot of um. You know, some of the smaller changes were just based on, we had a Department of Commerce checklist that we had to. Look at and made sure that we are complying. Um and so there were a few small changes because there's. Uh no net loss, those type of verbiage that has to be in there, um which I added, which isn't. Like, I don't think that's anything. And then, you know, with the new guidance, there's some definitions that are a little different. And those are all kind of towards the beginning of the document. I'm just looking through because you have page numbers on yours at the top, I believe, right? The one thing I was gonna um bring up is, so typically, when we see um. Jurisdictions ordinances, they don't always have something in there that allows you to actually. Go below um the minimum buffer. But Francis felt like, and and I did too, is that there is, we have been able to in some cases. Propose something smaller because of the way the site is constructed, like there's no other option. As long as you um provide a mitigation plan that clearly states. This is why we are proposing this and you provide a good argument to that. So we did, that's on page one and it's under two ten administration. So. We did add that, that wasn't in um Lewis County's. Ordinance. So we're not, I don't know, how are we feeling, Francis, on that ecology? Being okay with that. I mean, we're thinking, leave it in, see what they say.
Well, the challenge is is that ecology kind of, I think they, on one level, they do understand that cities need to have. More density. That's why we have sewer and water and streets and all that stuff and. If they keep pushing big bigger buffers on cities, then what it essentially does is it makes more spr- sprawl. Because you have to go further out. So I think the argument would be cities need more flexibility on constrained sites, which you have. In many cases, especially when you're, you know, um near a maybe a commercial zone that you you've targeted for many years. You want to have a commercial activity there and all of a sudden the wetland buffer doesn't allow it. So you got, the city's got to have flexibility. To administer. It kind of comes down to Todd and the city council, how many. Variances, do you want to ever, are you always want to go into a variance process for every time somebody can't meet? The bottom line of the code, or do you give them a little bit of a middle zone where they can? Do a, like mitigate the indirect impacts because they can't meet the minimum buffer. And if the city approves that, then they don't have to go through a variance process. Those are. Things that Todd can explain to you what is involved with the variance because it's a, you know, I'm sure you you do know, it's a usually a hearing. And it's just more process and time.
I think that's a good summary. I'm not going to go in any more depth than that unless you want it. I mean, it, we do have a variance process in our land development code and and in our city code. But it is cumbersome to require cities.
Yeah, so having that language in there would would allow you to not have to have a variance if you. If your consultant provided a mitigation plan that basically said, this is why we're doing it. This is why we don't consider that it's going to be, you know, we're mitigating adequately. For what we're proposing. Um so, but like I said, I'm not, you know.
And again, here your bail safe is always the deeper process. I mean, all this stuff goes out for state agency review. So if you're, if you're accepting the applicant's variance and it's. Way off base and you shouldn't do that, then hopefully one of the state agencies will catch that. I I don't know. I mean, I I'm not a qualified weapons or habitat biologist. So I mean, if they wanted to, Francis could pull the wool over my eyes anytime he wanted to, but he doesn't because he knows that it's gonna go out. And that damages his reputation if he does that. Um other consultants will do that, though. I mean, there's, there are. Left-leaning consultants out there and they they'll try to run something by you and the state agencies usually catch it.
Yeah, and then it puts it on the state agencies and not on the city to have to try to, right, well, juggle it all too. Yeah, exactly. I like that.
So that's your bail safe. So I I think having something like this in the code, knowing that right now you. I mean, you don't really have an administrative variance process. You have a variance process. Um so I think having something like this in the code gives flexibility and that's all it's for.
Um so the, I think the rest on page one and two is just like I said. Things that needed to go in because of the guidance and the checklist. Um the one thing I think um Todd wanted to ask about is if you go to page three and you see that land and. Use intensity table. I did provide it on the on the last page, but this has been modified a little bit, so it's. I did provide it on the, on the last page, but this has been modified a little bit, so it's easier to understand. I, after I started. Todd asked a few questions about the original table and I'm like, okay, this, I think it would just make it more clear. So. Um, I think you've had the question about the conversion to moderate intensity agriculture. Item, Todd, on whether.
Well, you know, so taking, taking from the Lewis County code, they do have agricultural practices, but in the city of Toledo. We don't have large scale agricultural practices in city limits. Um, so, so that's where cities and counties are different. So I was just asking the question. In, in our city code, it doesn't hurt to have it in there, but it's just not likely to ever come into play because. Cities only doesn't allow large scale agriculture.
And our proposed UGA also doesn't have any large scale agriculture on it either, unless you count hayfields. Which I don't think you do.
I saw hayfield somewhere. But I think it was, uh.
Well, I, so like.
Chicken farm?
Yeah, there it is.
How many chickens? Like, like, like the, like the ones out on, on, uh, Tucker, yeah, and, and, um, Euler. Like the several.
Agriculture is defined as. As moderate.
Do, we do, we do have that address.
That is what's in this draft.
Right.
What's proposed.
And then what about the large scale? Do we have that at all or?
The only thing that's in the high intensity is hobby farms.
Okay.
So I, I think you probably do have some of those in your UGA.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and even maybe in your downtown, I think that. When we were looking at rezoning that piece, they kept horses or something in. In a corral here in town.
It was almost like three acres or whatever.
The one by the, by the waste flower treatment place? They got, they got horses, I think, there.
No, well, yeah, they used to.
Yeah, grows, yeah. Oh, that's right.
But they were asking to, um.
Yes.
But that would probably be more of a hobby farm than a.
Yeah.
So, so it, it looks, Kerry, like this table. Addressed the question and I, I see you added.
No, I'm sorry, because Todd, you cut out a couple of times and I, I couldn't hear you. So what was the consensus to take out the conversion to moderate intensity? Or keep it in? I didn't hear that last part.
Um, the conversion to moderate intensity. We were just going to leave.
Leave in.
But that does exist outside of the UGA. And the county will apply in the UGA if we enter into an interlocal, which maybe we will do, so. So I, yeah, leave that in, I think was the consensus. Am I summarizing that correctly?
Yes.
Yeah.
For some reason, every once in a while, your audio cuts out and I don't know why. It might be on our end, but. If I ask you to repeat something, that's why, because I missed like a, a half a sentence. Keep me on my toes. Um, so directly below that is pretty much what we talked about, um. When we looked at the buffer comparisons. Um, and it has the tables, um, on page four. And then that, um, second table that has the water quality functions on page five. I put that in, I mean, if you guys had decided we don't want to go with that, I would have changed it, but I, I put it in.
The consensus was with your recommendation of.
Right, right. So that's what I started with because I was hoping that you would pick that option. And then, um, directly below that is just the discussion about, um. The reduction of buffers, um, the minimum buffer widths, and then it has a whole section about. What I was talking about, about reducing, um, high intensity to moderate. Um, and it basically kind of outlines what needs to be done in order to do that. And then Francis was the next table after that. Um. Francis was talking about those measures to reduce impacts. I think maybe Todd you were and, um. It just has, you know, different things that you can do, you know, with stormwater runoff, you know, there's example measures you can use. And I did put in there, which wasn't in some of the ordinances. That if there are some measures that aren't on here, but that. The administrator feels that they would be equal to something that's on here, that you guys have the discretion to go with those.
Well, this is probably where, um. Commissioner, uh, Cabral's question should come up and that, and that's where, uh, where a buffer is isolated by a change in elevation. Is that the section? We should try to put something like that in. Um, because that does happen here in Toledo. You have a rock face cliff that drops off a hundred feet and then goes down into. A river.
That's actually, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't highlight it. So that's actually right above where the tables for the buffers first start. It's. It's on page four and it's number five and it says functionally isolated wetland buffers. So I believe what you're asking about is vertical separation, that term. And Francis has been, um. With the city of Calama, there, that he's, um, been chatting about what the definition might be for that. And, um, maybe you can, I think that's what you're asking, right? That. When it, when you have a, you know, how do you measure the buffer if, if the slope is like this?
Right. So, we, we define a, um, vertical separation as a thirty percent. Slope or greater. So that's, um, thirty. Vertical feet over a hundred feet horizontal. So that's thirty percent. So that could be just a short bank that could subtract out of, um. The buffer or, um, you could, we haven't defined it as whether you could. Reduce the buffer to the beginning of that vertical separation. That's oftentimes what you're allowed to do. The, the thinking is, is that. The wildlife is down in the wetland. Don't really have much impact if the house or the activity is like. You know, thirty feet vertical above them. And because there is, there is topography that kind of breaks up the noise and the light and those kind of impacts. So that's why we've. We've, um, the vertical separation has been allowed in other jurisdictions. I don't know if ecology will always like that in there, but we want to keep. As much flexibility to the city administrator as possible. On, on buffer reductions and Toledo has that in several cases, I think.
Yeah, it doesn't have vertical separation, but, um. But so what we'll do is when I revise this, I'll, I'll put the definition of, of what. We're considering vertical separation, um, so that's more clear.
That's the imagine though will affect the Riverwalk stuff all the way through.
So was that, was that Todd kind of what you were asking about? Because we were coming to that section that. The reductions in buffer, it's, sorry, I keep jumping around. So this is page six, right under that, um. Reducing impacts table and. Um, Francis and I looked at this, so this text is actually what Lewis County has in it, rather than this much shorter. Text that we have put in about functionally isolated. We don't like this because we feel like, um, there's a lot of words in there. Um, like legally established substantial improvement. I think that that's going to maybe hamstring you on, um. I mean, probably Francis, you can give an example of something that might not be legally established, but would obviously. Be, um, isolate the buffer.
Well, the legally established thing is almost impossible to prove. How are you going to go back in time from the nineteen fifties or sixties or seventies and say, well, that driveway? I mean, the, the codes were even different back then. So the legally established part is. Not, not anything that anybody wants to get in and try and define or prove. If, and, and a lot of landowners do things as part of their farm or part of their forestry or part of their landscape. They put something in. And they don't intend to ever develop, but you know, twenty years later, they do develop or somebody buys their property to develop. Why should they be penalized because they put something in that isolates the buffer? So that's the thinking there.
What if you have a, what if you have a home within an existing buffer because it was built long ago and now? And, and you can't do anything to that home, like you would touch a wall because you'll trigger the zoning violation of some sort. Does that apply to that sort of?
Well, I, Ta- Todd would call that grandfathered, so you're, and I think you can. Most codes do allow you to, I think shorelines is a, is a different. Uh, topic is there's, there's more regulatory oversight in shorelines if you're in a shoreline jurisdiction, but. You can usually, um, expand or rebuild the house if you have to, um, up to a certain percentage. And yes, a house does functionally isolate. The buffer.
Okay. Interesting.
I mean, I, in, in most cases, a greenhouse, anything with a permanent, like a, a roof isolates a buffer.
Yeah, so a lot of, like, see, um, we didn't like because. I mean, I've never had to submit a wetland assessment when you have functionally isolated. To ensure there's no net loss of functions. I, I would never, we would never do that. Um, so I think that's really restrictive. And it's going to cost somebody a lot of money to get that just. And their buffer is already functionally isolated. And to me, it just doesn't make sure, you know, i- if it's functionally isolated, it's functionally isolated. So, I, I personally and Francis didn't really like. A lot of this text just because I felt like it really, um. That didn't allow a lot of latitude. However, I think Todd did have a point that, you know, some of this does more. Uh, it, it defines the functionally isolated, um, to more of a degree than what we have. And, you know, I think Todd, we might talk about, maybe we need to just have a little bit more language. Under that section. I just wouldn't recommend having the text that's there. So I, I would recommend just taking that completely out. Because we're already addressing it in what we said about function. That's basically what's this, this is, that's what this is.
And that's the section three on page seven and twelve common buffer lines? Is that where we are now?
No, we're on page six, um, under the, that table. It's number two.
Oh, so you're just suggesting delete that in favor of already having it defined above as a functional isolation, yes?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Because this was Lewis County's and we just, we just feel like it. I- i- it's too restrictive and I don't feel like it needs to be and. I haven't really, Francis, have you ever seen it defined as, as much as this is, like having to have a. Critical areas assessment and mitigation plan if you're functionally isolating a buffer?
No, you, you typically. Describe the wetland, what the buffer is by code, and then any functionally isolated features. And that's all we do and we usually draw that on the map. So, um, a builder, developer, whatever would know. Okay, I can't go beyond this driveway. I can't go beyond this building. Obviously, that's, you know, that's part of the buffer. So, um. It should, should be s- simply understood what functionally isolates a buffer. You shouldn't have to go through. Bunch of regma role for that.
So your recommendation is just to delete that number two in that entire section?
Yep. Yep.
You guys good with that?
Yes.
And to delete the table two?
Not table two, it's number two. We're on the bottom of page six. That, that number two is what we've been talking about, uh, reductions in buffer widths where existing roads or structures lie within the buffer. And they're, and they're just saying it's already defined up above as functional isolation with very simple words. It just adds a lot of words to it that.
So there's the, just for my understanding, the, the idea is that because there's more, there are more words here and essentially other considerations that you must have. That adds cost because that all needs to be documented and investigated and sort of talked about.
And also. So that way the state or federal agencies that they're involved can hamstring you by your own words. They can start, if you give them more words, then they have more points that they. Either a developer can hamstring the regulatory agencies or the agencies can hamstring the developers. So if you have less words. It's a simpler concept and. So it sounds like we're okay to take that section out, Kerry?
Okay. There's not a lot of changes, um, that are, there's the buffer width averaging section that's on the next page. That I, that's just almost exactly what's in Lewis County and that. That would stay in if, you know, we've decided to go with option one, so that text would stay in. On page eight, there was quite a bit of changes based on a lot of, because of the ecology guidance, however. Um, one thing that we, um, wanted to be, um. Lost my thought, thought of train. Um, we wanted to follow the guidance and also, uh, recognize what we've seen. Lewis County, um, didn't really have anything that talked about mitigation bank credits being allowed for mitigation. Um, I know you guys don't currently, well, they do. You guys do have a bank, don't you? That, didn't you say, Francis, they have a bank in there? Toledo.
No, a mitigation bank is not a place where you put your money. It's a place where you buy credits from when you're filling a weapon.
Right.
So that's. I, I think we talked a little bit about mitigation banking, maybe in the introductory meeting, but maybe not. But that's, the big concept is, is that. I'm going to go fill this and instead of mitigating on my site or I'm going to impact this wetland here. And rather than give up more property on my site or, or do things on my site, I'm going to contribute to something that was regionally established and they're selling me credits for money. So you basically buy mitigation at an offsite location. So that's, that's the mitigate, the mitigation banking concept.
And the advantage to that is that. Once you pay for those credits, you can just walk away. You don't, it's not like when you have to. Do your own mitigation site and have to plant the plants and monitor and everything. Basically writing a check and then you're, you're done. Which is nice if you're a developer to not have to worry about that. But according to ecology, that is the first, so if you have a mitigation bank, they're going to want you to go there first. Before you do any other type of mitigation onsite or offsite. Because, um, there's been so many failures in, um, you know. Permitting responsible people that do their own mitigation sites and they fail and. Um, so mitigation banks usually are like hundreds of acres. That are restored, so they're like a huge tract of land and they're providing a lot of function. So they, they prefer that. There's all these financial assurances that have to be in place. So, you know, they know that the, the mitigation is going to. Be in perpetuity, so they're just, um.
Makes sense.
Well, I recall the conversation with regards to mitigation banking and, and the question. If I recall was, do we have access to mitigation banks?
That's a good question for Kerry. Did you hear that one? I think that was the same question you were just asking. Think we're all asked.
Because I thought you said there was. Maybe you were talking about Lewis County. I swear you said that there was, is it Chehalis Bank?
Well, there's. One bank in Lewis County, but I wouldn't cover Chehalis. Um, doesn't um the Cowee Man, not Toledo, Toledo. The uh Cowee Man Bank, I think, covers Toledo.
Okay, and.
The service area goes up the Calis River.
Is there a? Contact information for that that we could have on hand for developers?
Yes.
And we can verify that, too. I can look. The Cowee Man Bank is actually one that our company worked on, so. Um, we can look at that. Um, but even if you didn't have one, if you have this in here and. For some reason, another one becomes established, you already have that text in there. So rather than. Even if you didn't have one, we felt like putting it in. Would make more sense and would protect you, you know. Until, you know, who knows what will happen.
Speaking from the development side, you have the right to check and walk away.
And does it, a mitigation bank have to be? Owned by the city? Is it a third party? Is it owned by the county? What's?
Um.
Owns it?
Most, most um mitigation banks are privately held. Um, there are a few that are owned by like a a city or a county. Um, but most of them are, the bank sponsors are. Well, they vary. Um, they can be developers, they can be investors. Um. But primarily the ones that we work on, they're not. We only have one. We're working for the city of Bellingham with their mitigation bank, but that's pretty rare. We don't usually work for. Public agencies, so.
So uh, City, City of Ocean Shore owns one, too.
Oh, that's right. I blocked that. That's a whole nother story. Um, okay, so. That I just wanted to draw your attention to that because it's a little different than what Lewis County didn't have that and it's really um. The way the guidance has been written for quite a while and some of the jurisdictions just haven't included that um. There isn't really, like, if you go down to page nine, there's really not um. There's really not much change in the. These are the ratios where it says permitting responsible mitigation ratios, so that would be. If, you know, your developer um as part of his permit approval. They, he has to do mitigation. He would look at these ratios to figure out. Okay, what, how much mitigation am I actually gonna have to provide? Um, and so those are pretty standard. There was a little bit of additions based on the ecology guidance. Um, nothing that I feel like. It wouldn't hurt you guys. It's, it actually is good that they've now added preservation because that used to be. The least preferred option and that's now actually preferred over enhancement. Um, and the ratios are the same as enhancement, which is a pretty big. Switch, because it used to be, if you promote, pro- pro-. Proposed preservation, they would just be like, yeah. We'll, we'll give you like thirty to one for preservation. So that's a big change and that helps because some people, that's all they have. They don't have the ability to do any of the other um types of mitigation, so. Does that all make sense?
Does, yeah.
Okay. Um, the rest, most of the rest of this is just. There's not that much more and it's just um, you know, talking about different things on on the wetland assessment. Most of this is standard text from. Lewis County that we went through and we're like, yeah, that looks fine. We think it'll meet your guys' needs. Um, so that's really all. That's kind of the highlights of what maybe the major things are that that got revised. Um. And if you have, you know, obviously, if you have more questions, you have a little bit more time to look through this. Um, you know, we're more than happy to answer. So.
We'll get one more.
Hopefully that wasn't too confusing.
Well, we'll, we'll clean this up. We'll make changes or. Modifications based on our discussion tonight. We'll bring it back one more time. Kind of like we're doing with each of the other pieces, so you get two touches and then. We put it away for a while and then you get a final touch when we go through the thing as a whole. Thank you very much, Carrie. That was. That was good. Did, did you get what you needed out of planning commissions for direction in making any final changes?
I think so. I mean, it's a lot. I know it's a lot to kind of go over at once and um, so I appreciate. You guys hanging in there.
We're drowning in a knowledge wetlands.
Or are we waiting for something?
No, I think we're good.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys. Oh, you're welcome.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Bye bye.
Okay, before y'all get around, get out of here, uh review progress and schedule discussion. And classes reminder.
Do your classes.
Progress. So I I did uh include our update based on all that. Um, you can see we're making really good progress. We just went through the April thirtieth meeting with the wetlands. Um, Habitat will probably be at our May meeting, um but it may not because we also have. Um, utilities and transportation. I did talk to Mike Johnson and his team will be ready. At the May meeting for that. Um, so in a couple of weeks here, we'll, we'll hear. Capital facilities plan, utilities and transportation. Um, which are also technical, but they're also a little bit easier to comprehend because they come with. With maps and graphs that you can look at roads and utility lines and things like that, so. So we've got a lot planned for May um. A- a- as well as bringing back the final piece of the the weapons.
But we only have one meeting.
Yeah, do we need to schedule another meeting?
That's why we have this conversation about progress. I think um if we do another meeting in May, then I would push. This element. And the, and the care of piece that. Um. That we had discussed to that meeting. To the second meeting and have Mike present at the first meeting. So if if we want to do that, that that's how we would use that meeting. And then in June, I think we'd be well set up to. Maybe take a final review of um either the code sections or the comprehensive plan elements. And then in, in July, we should begin the, the hearing process. Then August, we'll go out for CIPA and that sixty day review. And then in November, we can get it to council, so.
So currently we're set up for May's meeting of Wednesday, the fourteen. Anybody have?
Twenty first.
Huh?
Twenty first.
Yeah, anyway, right. Twenty first, so does anybody want to throw a different date in there?
I'm out the seventh.
You're out the seventh?
Yeah, well, that's, yeah, that's.
Let's do it that day.
That's thanks to me.
It's a good less question.
We could do it the sixth. Are you guys?
Well, see, that's just a few days away.
Oh, yeah. Come on, Todd.
Well, we're gonna.
How about the twenty first?
We're gonna make. Let them make updates to that and then we also have a habitat code section.
Twenty first or twenty eighth?
Well, May twenty first is our existing meeting.
So twenty eighth or whatever.
Twenty eighth.
Yeah.
If we did the fourteenth, that would give us a couple of weeks to button things up. Um, and then maybe E L S would come back, so.
I, it, there's a chance I'm, I may be in Austin on the fourteenth, but right now it's, it's over.
You can always zoom in, too.
So the other, the other piece is, is it's not really taking you guys a lot of time to get through these code sections to verify. I mean, like, tonight, we went through floodplains pretty quickly. So if we can do that, then we don't need that second meeting in May. I'll just bring. We'll bring this one back. And then you'll. Be able to look through that. Um. So.
And that would be more of a verification process, really, I think.
So, so if you do a quick review of that, then I think you could get away with one meeting in May and you'd still have June if you needed to add it. If we feel like we're slipping. Or we're not making it, we could add that second meeting in June. So it just depends if. If we add a second meeting now, we won't need to add a second meeting in June and the summer gets a lot nicer in June, July than it is now, so it's up to you all when you want to have that.
I say we add it in May, so we can have.
I'm gonna be good with the twenty eighth for sure. That's a hundred percent for me, so I don't have a problem doing it.
Twenty first and the twenty eights.
Yeah. And that should give everybody time, whatever it been prior to.
Yes, yeah.
And could we call the twenty eighth in workshop? That's a little less prep.
Yeah.
It, I, all these are are public workshops.
But it's still be a public meeting, but.
We can.
I'd be more inclined to send you. Either raw letter documents or.
Yeah, call it a workshop.
You know, just, it's just a little less.
Okay.
Yep.
So we're, we're looking at May twenty eighth for our second meeting, so we'll meet on the twenty first and then again a week later on the twenty eighth. Which is fine, so I know it's coming up and I can prepare for it now. At six, six P M?
Unless you guys want to do it earlier.
No, 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 this is fine.
Well, the, I mean, the other option that we've used before is we've added the five o'clock in there, so we could just add the five o'clock to the twenty first. And then we could get through the code confirmation and that sort of thing and then dive into capital facilities and all those pieces.
I'm good with that, too.
Hmm.
You guys good with fives? Instead of doing an extra day?
For better people, okay.
No, no core required at five?
The only thing I would. So I don't know, it's, that's the only downside. I'm happy to do it if that's what everybody wants to do, so.
I'm happy to do it if everyone wants, but I'm right in the middle of baking, so I just, I have to cut away to come here anyway.
Yeah.
I have, I have a lot of stuff going on, man.
Why should just do two meetings?
Two meetings, the twenty first, twenty eighth.
Okay.
Okay, let's don't leave yet, Tom. Glasses reminder.
I, I did like. I did, I have a certificate. I turned it into.
Very nice.
Sarah. Yeah, that's awesome.
Very good, sir.
They just let you hang out there, didn't they?
Any public input, hosts?
I have your motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Seconds.
In favor?
Alright.
Alright.
We are adjourned.
Alright.